So what do I do? Just call, call here?
Yes.
It's not this. All right, are we recording Tim?
We shall later.
I will take care of it because I need to do the door.
Okay. Uh, uh, good afternoon, everybody. This is the Ulster County Resource Recovery Agency. Today is September 11th, 2025, and I'd like to call the public hearing, budget hearing to order. Um, so if anybody has any public comment, we're welcome to hear it.
We ask that everybody who has public comments please sign in.
Oh, hi, I'm Poppy Cannon-Rice. I'm signed in. Um, I think that there was a little bit of concern that I, uh, that because the contract had a $60 million bond cap, that that might mean the landfill would be refisited sooner than indicated. But Mark has, Mark had emailed. Um, I find that to be something that I, is not likely to happen. So I'm gonna pass along the information I have to, that I share information on. So thanks.
You may want to repeat that in a regular meeting. This one is specifically on, on the 2026 budget.
Okay. Nobody was in.
Anybody else like to speak on the charts?
Okay.
We should wait for.
Good team minutes.
There you go. Someone came in. Thank you. This is meeting after, but.
We can't.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I missed the entire, right?
There was.
Just started.
We're still going.
We held it open just for you. Well, how gracious. Thank you.
I've, I've always said you're my favorite board.
Is that official public comments? For the record, you put on a record.
Get that on the record.
I, I said it, so therefore I stand, I stand by it. I mean, at least for the moment. All right, time's up on that.
We, I mean, we can't strike this meeting until 6:15, so might as well see if there's anybody. I guess. We appreciate your comment.
Was your copy made available to the public or was it all, was it in the?
Signing sheet.
Was it in the ledger?
I'm not here at 12:00. I don't know if you want to sign this, but there, it's not.
Thank you.
Yeah, in case you try to make a motion to adjourn later, then we know.
I come in and in chromatic waves, just scream motion to adjourn.
We missed you last night.
What was last night?
What?
School board. Oh, well. I thought that was next week. How would it go? Yeah?
Just, and four people came and asked about doing something with the resolution. If I spoke in the resolution. You go back and listen.
You need to make a motion to, like, dissolve the district during. Then I would have, it's a, it's missed. Then the budget, you actually pay school board trustees.
Yeah, do that.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, despite the fact you couldn't, that wouldn't necessarily stop some water trial. So we did not.
We're in the process.
We're in it right now.
We're in it till safety.
We're just waiting to see if anybody else will come.
Yeah, because the regular board meeting starts at 6:15.
Poppy Cannon.
Anything good? I think.
She's gonna repeat it.
Yeah, where are you? So she spoke that it wasn't on the budget, that she's going to, um, repeat it regularly.
Correct.
Right.
Wow. Someone really.
Okay.
You close close to public there.
Yeah, you need a motion, please. Motion.
We're in motion.
You don't. It's on the.
The chair.
But the closing, you need a motion.
Yeah, she's new. She's new at this job.
It's okay.
The overall agenda tonight is here as well.
Don't jinx us.
Although, you know, you may not have followed both energy and environment in ways in the past. The resolutions about the state contract.
The next, for what just.
Next, uh, year or the legislature.
So if you have any sort of gratitude going on, you have a desk of wood that you can knock on.
I don't have that. I'll make a fiddle on whether it passes tonight or next week.
Would want to. Just check. I don't know. I didn't say that. Yeah, it's just, we'll see for further clarification.
You got to spare a point. I'll lay another first.
One of that.
What is that?
That's happening.
I'll maybe. Um.
Share this. Yes, actually, I am the secretary.
I, uh, yeah, first, like, or I just was, like, brain freeze and signed them like I was the only signer.
I'll make a word. I'll do it afterward, though.
Yep.
Then I can at least focus on that.
Yeah.
So the seating just before a board meeting, making nice and docile, so it's pleasant.
That's why we got pizza for you tonight, too.
Now, I'm on a yogurt diet. If you got it. It's a long story.
We'll never stop for lunch, so it's a long time for breakfast, too.
Just a little, a lot of yogurt. Now that I think about it, they should have, like, pizza flavored yogurts.
Yeah.
That would be really good.
Put these in the, in the, um, got the blender, uh, what is it called?
Boltz.
Blender.
Yeah, blender.
No, that's a blender, the other thing. The smaller one.
Other blender?
Yeah.
The NutriBullet? Vitamix here? The Vitamix?
I know what he's talking about. I can't remember.
Yeah, go vrr, 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 makes you go.
I think that's only.
Whenever I use one, so I don't know.
I think it's because of.
Smoothie.
Smoothie maker?
Does it?
Smoothie?
No, 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 I'll, branding, it's branding.
Weizenart.
Yeah, whatever.
Thank you.
I'm gonna pay it. It's still business.
I don't know. Six fourteen, so.
One second.
We'll stick with the rules. Maybe one more minute.
Okay.
Might be someone running in the door in the last minute.
You can keep the hearing open as long as you want. Stop it later on. You don't have to do it before that one's gone.
All right, I'll entertain motion to close the phone here.
Make that motion. Second.
You say that? Okay, public hearing is.
You gotta write this down.
You can do a vote.
Oh, let's take a vote. Sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
All, all in favor, three, all opposed, zero. Anybody abstained?
Yeah.
Six fourteen.
Okay, so now I'd like to. Agency regular board meeting. Uh, let's do a roll call. Uh, Jim Durbin is absent. Donna Egan is present. Andrew G. Orsi.
Here.
Erica Brown is absent. Mike Baden.
Present.
Present. Uh, agency staff, Mark Ryder.
Here.
Tim DeGraff.
Here.
Angelina Brandt.
Here.
Tim Weedman.
Here.
Nancy Lamb.
Here.
Present, thank you. Can we all stand for allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, I'd like to open the floor for public comment. Go ahead, Poppy.
Hi, I'm Poppy Cannon-Rice. Um, a couple of legislators reached out to me with some concern that the, uh, bonding cap of 60 million would put us back in the area of, um, landfill design and testing. And I, there remains some concern in our community about whether the landfill is gonna come back sooner than five years or whatever. So I have communicated with Mark about this, and I don't think it's cause for concern. Um, I think that the contract, you know, as it stands, will be, um, what's necessary for the agency. And, uh, you know, I will communicate that with my emails.
Thanks. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Anna?
Yeah, um, I agree. And, uh, there was, I think, a very healthy negotiation, um, at the last Energy, Environment, Sustainability Committee meeting. And people really listened to each other. And, uh, we also checked the changes with the, um, uh, legislative committee. And, um, they, they work for both the legislature and for the agency. So I think, um, it's a really good step in the right direction. And, uh, it's nowhere near what's gonna be needed for a local landfill that I believe would not be appropriate. I, uh, do, or some sites. Um, but I do think we can find. I, the reason I wanted to give a comment is I just came back from the Association of Counties. And I heard the best presentation on New York's plans to, um, maximize waste diversion uh, from someone from DEC. And I apologize that I don't have his name. I have his information, but I haven't unpacked yet. Um, and, uh, those of us who heard the presentation, including Peter Criswell, who is Chair of the Legislature, want to repeat that. And the gentleman from the DEC, since he has the presentation already done, he has the slides. Uh, we're gonna try to do a hybrid and record it. It will just bring everyone up to speed. Uh, I've been watching DEC presentations for 13 years. This is the best I've seen. So, um, I'm mentioning it 'cause, um, I'd like the agency to co-sponsor and help with the outreach. Uh, and we will reach out through the Supervisors Association, the Climate Smart Committee, and, you know, all of our resources to, um, repeat this and, and have it, um, uh, videotaped so that people that miss the actual event, I don't know when it will be. As soon as possible because, uh, it was really outstanding. There were other interesting things. And one other thing I do want to bring back is that, I believe it's Madison County, but don't quote me, I'll, I'll check on that. Um, is planning now for recycling of solar panels. There are a lot of solar panels here in place or going in, sketched in place in Western New York. And 20 years from now, that's gonna be a lot of, uh, solar panels that some of them may be able to be reconditioned, but mostly they'll need to be recycled. And so they are putting clauses in contracts that require the developer to set aside funds and have a plan for. And that in turn will, uh, incentivize at least some industry to move into that part of New York uh, to process that down the road. But it's, you know, thinking ahead about recycling solar panels when they're no longer useful. I, I was very impressed with that. And I wanted to just, yeah, thank you for getting up with it.
Um, so the EPA is also in the process of, um, I watched your presentation or just watched. It's like coming up with best practices for large-scale lithium batteries, um, for storage, um, and style batteries. They have, there's four different categories. Um, and part of that is like a nationwide, um, EPR for batteries. And I think they mentioned that there was an EPR for solar as well. So, um, I think that is all coming down.
Any other public comment? Kind of like to.
Let's go. I made on one more measure. Um, just, if there is any update. If you, I, I have some notes from, um, uh, Vicky Favela, but, um, at somewhere in the meeting, I'm hoping to get an update on the zero-waste implementation plan to whatever degree we know.
I think.
Any other public comment? Is there a gentleman that was sitting over here?
No, Steve Elman. He's.
Oh.
And I think he left. He was just here for the.
I'm just taking notes or something.
So we'll close public comment. Next thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll take a motion to.
I'll make that motion.
Sure. Second, any discussion? I would like to add on there, at Erica's request, a discussion of attendance policy of board members.
Under new business?
Under new business. So that. I have to accept, uh, as amended?
I'll amend my motion.
You'll amend your motion?
I'll amend my second.
Okay, and then all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Nobody? Anybody abstain? Nobody. Uh, approval of the meeting minutes from the August 14th, 2025 regular board meeting. Did everybody have a chance to review that?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't catch anything. I'll make that motion.
You'll make that motion. You'll take, second it. Any discussion?
I, I just wanna just publicly say thank you to the town of Ulster Supervisor for accommodating us at the last minute.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Appreciate you.
Noted. Uh, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? None. Anybody abstain? None. Next item on the agenda, communication and announcements. Regular board meeting is scheduled for October 9th at 6:15. And the Zero Waste Committee meeting is scheduled for October 9th, just proceeding that at 5:15. General reports, uh, any committee reports? Any committees that met since last time? None, I think. Okay. Resign program up there? Good one. Thank you.
In the context, our outreach messaging focused on summertime sustainability, focusing on zero-waste tips for festivals, practicing leaving a trace while enjoying the cat skills, and we emphasized our free posters, bin rentals, and recycling enforcement compliance. On the radio, our general agency mission message aired along with promotions for our household hazardous waste event. Beyond, um, the advertising campaigns, we responded to 533 phone calls in August, which was about 24 hours, um, on the hotline. We hosted facility tours for the Ulster County Climate Corp, um, interns, a new compost, um, partner, Laughing Fox Farms, and a local chapter of the booth beyond plastics. We also participated in our recycle right in class. Um, in addition to, uh, our outreach at the Ulster County Fair in early August, we also hosted a booth at the Hudson Valley Seed Coast Tomato Festival, um, with our volunteers. And collectively, those programs reached 599 adults and 299 children in August through 43 hours of direct education. Um, Ulster County's Green the Scene Grant Program has been rolling out this year, um, across several events that participated in the grant program. And last month, we had a partnership with the, um, Caribbean Festival with our bin rental. And last month, we had a partnership with the Caribbean Festival with our bin rental program. So we had a very successful HHW event. Um, on August twenty-third, we had two hundred and one attendees. We still had a lot of capacity um in that event, um but there were also a lot of note shows and cancellations which contributed to that attendance. But registration's open now for our next HHW event. That's going to take place on Sunday, October twenty-sixth here in Kingston. Our weekly bagged compost sales um continue to be slow during the summer, but we sold seventy-one bags of compost in the month of August. And at our Saturday Light Times Recycling Event, we saw two hundred and thirty-nine drop-offs during the month of August, which is great. Um, in September, looking ahead, we're going to continue to focus on festival recycling. Um, recycling outreach team is looking to revamp a lot of new media around events and festivals sustainability. So you can expect to see that from us as we get to the end of the year in terms of new media, new bin signs, a new webpage, um and other media. So I'll just be reading and just take any questions.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. How? How do you feel that we're working with residents of the county? Recycling, even for the most well-intended people, is, is very confusing sometimes to people, what's recyclable, what's not? You know, what, what their pickup vendor will take versus what we're able to take? So do you, do you feel like? Obviously, there's always room to gain more knowledge with people, but do you feel like it's, it's something that people are now understanding better? That, and thank you for all you and your team are doing. It's, it's, I think it's helping as, as a former supervisor, but I, I still hear a lot of people who are really confused. And I don't have an answer. I really don't. So I'm just wondering how you feel in general. Are we making strides to tackle the hurdle and how do we take it to the next level?
Yeah, great question. So you have to have that social advertising in as many different ways as possible to really build that kind of um momentum with the message and awareness of all the resources that we're offering. So we, you know, take advantage of a lot of different strategies through radio, through printed news advertising, through digital ads, through social media, through YouTube ads, through um, we've done, you know, bus ads, we've even done billboards. Make the message as loud and as often as we can um within the scope of our education budget. In the interactions that we have with most people, um, people are very engaged on the issue. I find that a lot of our residents have a high level of awareness about the recycling industry and some of the challenges around plastic recycling. Um, I find that a lot of residents we talk to are really looking for more solutions as well. People are um always seeking out things like how to recycle film plastics and plastic bags, how to recycle their clothing. People are very interested in ways to use less plastic. And I think that's an important piece of the messaging. It's not recycle more, right, but how do we create less packaging and the need to recycle even less? Um, we get invited to a lot of um public speaking uh at private groups as well, like Rotary Clubs, Senior Clubs, Garden Clubs, where we're reaching a lot of people and they have a lot of zest um to learn about recycling. So that's really encouraging. I think that um more is always better, as much as we can do things like that. And uh have good resources on our website for those people that are seeking it out. But people really have to be seeking it out to get um that information, right? So, so yeah, people are very confused about recycling. There's no doubt about that. They're, they're very confused specifically about plastic recycling and we hear that time and time again. Um, any way that we can try to streamline that messaging and get a uniform message that reaches everyone is hard to do. Like you pointed out, companies have different guidelines and different preferences for um different items. But I think the message that we've crafted is, is good, a good message. It's simple, it's short, it's memorable, it's bottles, jugs, jars, and tubs. And those shapes that we know are very good efficacy in the recycling industry. So we'll try to focus on a simple, memorable message that reaches as many people as possible. And the more new places we can go and meet, you know, meet new audiences, um, I think the better we'll get at really getting that message out. And any suggestions that the board has, or I'm very interested in your thoughts on reaching more people?
Might I ask one? It's not, it's not a question, it's, it's a thought. When you said, I'm wondering if, if uh schoolchildren and even teenagers tend to bring messages home, maybe not as much to teenagers, but schoolchildren, younger children. I'm wondering if trying to go into the schools and getting through either assemblies or through, you know, high school, some high school class or something, sure, not trying to do the whole school, but small groups. I'm wondering if that might be a worthwhile thing to pursue and just an idea that popped in my head, so.
I agree.
How many schools agree with the last?
Uh, you know, almost like a dozen.
I mean, we're, we're actively in the schools.
Yeah, so, okay. It's, yeah, and you're doing, you are doing great and your team is doing great, but it's just, I feel like we just gotta take it. We're here, we gotta get the ears somehow.
I appreciate that.
Certain schools, we have an ongoing relationship where they want us to meet with the second or third graders every year and like Angelina and her team go in and do classes in.
And I'd add, we always send a parent take home flyer. You know, all of the promotional items that we hand out have our website, have our phone number. And especially in schools, you know, we, we load the kids up with information that they can take home, whether it's on a coloring book or on a, you know, uh flyer. So that is definitely a great way to reach more families.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Taking a page out of.
Yeah, thank you. Um, MSW tonnage report, please.
Yeah. So for the month of July, um, this is unfortunately the fourth straight month we were under our target. Um, MSW was nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight, so we shortened the target by six hundred and thirty-seven tons. And CND is three thousand and one, which furthered the target by four hundred and one. Um, sludge tends to be pretty much on course. We're only off twenty-eight tons per year. Year-to-date, MSW and CND is off by three thousand three hundred and seventy-three, which is about um four percent, which is, still stays, keeps us in line to hit around a hundred and thirty-seven thousand tons at the end of the year. Uh, the recycling tonnage report, um, generally speaking, as I already said, this tends to fluctuate or have correlation with the towns. But I did want to point out, we had a couple of um, the, the, the co-mingle um at a hundred and twenty-two tons actually had a lot to do with the city of Kingston. I don't know if you guys are familiar with their pickup, how they alternate weeks and everything. It just so happened they had two, two extra days of co-mingle pickup, which kind of skewed that number a little more than normal. And um, we had a private hauler that had, I don't know the reason why, but on the cardboard side, they brought us um a little less. So that number obviously went down even more tonnageous compared to June actually. Then I'll move on to the MRR. All center analysis. And our sale of recyclables, and this is lots of number than the treasurer's report when we get to it. Um, our aluminum is, uh, that represents our UBC's universal beverage cans. We have revenue of twenty thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and usually sell our UBCs around every three to four months. You'll see the last time we had sales was back in March. Um, and you'll also, if you look at the graph, you'll see that our, that we increased, I believe it was about seventy-eight cents a pound, um, which is, that's a pretty good number. So our total sale of recyclables for the month was fifty-one thousand five hundred and ninety. Um, related cost for residual and glass recycling for the month was twelve thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. So that gave us a net revenue of thirty-nine thousand seven five for the month. On the expense side, on the back side, let's see here. Um, no real items of note there. Total personnel and operating expenses for the month was forty thousand five fifty-three. So we only saw a net loss for the month of three thousand three seventy-eight. And our year-to-date net loss is a hundred and twenty-five thousand one fifty-five. It doesn't always like to point out in the bottom right corner, um, our net loss was on a forty-one thirty-seven for the charge that, that's typically, that's what we would need to break even. And then the last but not least.
Recycle.
Because we take it for.
That's a little bit higher than it usually is, isn't it?
Forty, right?
It's been, it's been hovering. It'll, sometimes it'll swing because of, as I mentioned, the nature of, of how long it takes us to say bail the plastic. And I just mentioned the UBCs, so we're spending that money. We have expenses monthly that tend to be consistent. But however, our revenues don't necessarily match up from a timing standpoint, so it can, it can swing. When you're talking about, say, four hundred tons in a month is what our, you know, what we divide by to figure out a per ton, so it can swing.
It was a good revenue month though, wasn't it?
Yeah, yep.
Because you had a, the aluminum.
Yep. So for the month, I think for the month, that number would have been like seven months, right?
Seven dollars and six cents.
Yeah.
But for year-to-date, it was forty. And year-to-date is forty-one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, I got you.
Forty-one thirty-seven. And it's typically around forty.
So if you, that was a good point. So when I say swinging wildly, I guess that's more the monthly numbers. You see them going all over the place. But if you look at our year-to-date of forty-one and then you look at, oh, we're on the far left column, where that's our monthly average across three full years, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-four, we're about thirty-seven.
Yeah, I'm sort of, I thought it was.
Uh, so the treasurer's report, um, as I mentioned, our sale of recyclables line is, is higher than, um, in the month of July, sixty-one thousand one forty-nine for the UBC loads. And our total revenue for the month was two million forty-three thousand and forty-one dollars. On the expense side, personnel costs saw a little uptick and that was because we had to administer the staff, there were replacement staff. Um, and the recycling education line, um, you know, we had, we had our fair attendance, so there was a number of items that are included in that line of thirteen thousand seven eighty-six. As I noted down below, you know, with some travel utensil kits, uh, backer composting guide, bottles. Total expenses for the month of one million eight hundred sixty-four thousand six fifty-one, which gave us a net operating revenue of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand three ninety. Uh, we did have some capital-related costs for perimeter roadwork, some DC compliance work doing down at the uh, New Paul's landfill. Um, for ten thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. Most of that relates to a screener that we're running. And so, but for the month, we did have a surplus of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand four thirty-four. So our year-to-date is a surplus of two hundred and thirty-three thousand six thirty-five. So I don't know if you guys remember last month, I had said that it was, it was looking like a good July and then it was a good July. Any questions?
Usually we're kind of operating in a deficit the first half of the year and then it turns at some point, right?
Because usually we have that debt service payment that throws everything out of whack that we're building up from, so, yep.
But the reason it's this month, I mean, this year's capital outlet came has already come, right? So we've already spent four hundred and one thousand dollars in capital out like.
Brilliant. Uh, treasurer's report?
That was it.
That was it?
We get a, just a motion to accept.
Make a motion?
I made that motion, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? None. Anybody abstaining? It's approved. Executive Director's report, Mark?
Yeah, so I apologize again for not getting this to you with the packets. Um, there was no Town Supervisors Association meeting in August. They took the month of August off. During the September Energy and Environment uh meeting, the resolution to approve the contract, uh, was approved. Um, and last night, WATHA did the same thing. They made some small amendments and we'll go through that um when the resolution is up. Uh, if you remember last month, I discussed that FCS, our engineering firm for land, was scheduled to come in September to report their ending, to present their report to the board. Since we have two members missing, I asked them to come in October. Uh, repower project, um, we meet weekly with Sustainable Hudson Valley and Secularity um to plan a stakeholders forum and bond circular economy and the repower project. Uh, on top of that, we've interviewed four people for the reuse coordinator position and hope to have a decision soon. On a disappointing note, the owners of eleven fifty-five Flatbush have decided to move forward uh with a different party. And so we are kind of back to the drawing board um when it comes to finding a location for a reuse center. So I've already contacted a uh commercial real estate agent and we're looking at some various properties next week. But it was the terms of the lease that they found, you know, were a bit more favorable with these other parties. They've been telling us all along that there was other people. You know, you never know what, whether how true or not that is, but it was true in this case, so. Um, county contract we'll discuss in the resolution, uh, collective bargaining. So we've had some change with our business agent at TM Search four forty-five. I had asked for the work that is going to happen next week, if they could try to get us something prior to budget. Now is when they're ready for the proposal, so they'll be submitting a proposal, a lot of work back and forth with them in negotiations. We have that first meeting next Friday. Um, our collective bargaining agreement ends at the end of this year. Permit modifications, I expect, you know, the mattress and, and the seventy-five hundred tons of food waste. Any day now, I've asked the mattress recycling companies to refresh their quotes, which they're in the process of doing. RFP diversion, so we narrowed the, the proposal was down to five. And, and so we, there, you know, if you remember, we started with seven that we received. We've narrowed it down to five for presentation to the evaluation committee and then that will get narrowed further um to present at the board in the November meeting. Either a special meeting, um, I'll work with whatever works for you all um in getting the, the companies here in person. And then hopefully by December, uh, we'll have a decision um to move forward at the December meeting. Everybody's holding their prices for the additional. They were supposed to really hold their prices in the RFP till October. I know by now the five companies um that will be presenting, that they will need to hold their prices through the end of December in order to move forward in this process and they've all agreed to do so. And that's it. As far as public comment, there's, or as far as the public piece of the.
Any further um work on the, the agency, uh, you were the, the attorney on the town contracts and the code three oh four that we discussed. I mean, you looked them over. I don't know, you're busy, but.
So code three oh four, we had said that we would be proposing, sending something to, presenting something to you all in October. So that work is ongoing.
Okay.
And Robert will be here in October. I had requested, um, Donna had requested that he come tonight, but he has a child care issue. So he is set to come in October. Um, and he has given us recommendations. Um, I have not gotten it to our recycling team yet, and so I need to get it to them and then um to Angelina. And Nancy's reviewed it, so we're compiling everything and hopefully at the October meeting.
I saw on his compliance report, they said that he wanted some information, he wanted some changes with the multiple family dwellings and so forth.
Yeah, that's where a lot of his focus is. And to also clarify that if you have, or put in the law, that if you're providing a receptacle for waste, you need to provide a receptacle for recycling. So one of the things that he's really been doing is working with gas stations, right, at the pump. And two of our larger gas station companies, Stewart's and Quick Check, are working to implement that. And I think that will be extremely helpful when people go to clean out their car
Yeah.
to have recycling option right there. Um, just a, one other point on that is that we don't, the, the county has a contract with an administrative hearing officer. That contract expired at the end of December in twenty twenty-four. Um, they've asked, I, I was the one last in contact with that individual. They've asked me to reach out to them to see if he was interested in extending that contract. It's, it's very difficult. They have administrative hearing officers for the health department, for others, and it's very difficult to find lawyers that want to be administrative hearing officers. Um, he is not, this was two or three weeks ago, the last time I reached out and he hasn't gotten back to me yet. So I'll reach out again, but I would say that's probably not positive news that he's looking to continue on that. So we may be on the search. That is kind of where we're at with pausing um any kind of enforcement right now because we can't send a notice of violation without an administrative hearing officer. So we are going to be, Robert's drafting letters to all the haulers, um, letting them know that um we found a large amount of contamination in several loads on the tipping floor and that this is kind of the last warning and that the next thing they can expect to see is notice of violation. So this is something that Duchess County did. They're extremely successful at it. Um, they sent that out and then they followed up with violations. Um, and they've really been like the last two or three months, so.
So we, can we just issue a violation with a fine or do you have to go to clearly? So we, can we just issue a violation with a fine or do you have to go to purely administrative hearing officer?
They have to have an op.
You have to have recourse.
They have to have the opportunity for a hear.
Did we ever use that in the past though? Did we actually, we never used it, so what was?
We've never actually really administered. Well, actually, I don't know whether that's a hundred percent true.
We haven't used it recently.
We have not used it in the recent history, I don't know.
Exercise that expectancy here.
So we hadn't used an administrative law judge, I mean, I'm not gonna go through the long story of who was there, who was doing what.
Yeah.
But there, I mean, we have had fines, we have brought in, you know, our customers and and charging them all that type of stuff, so. Has been compliance, has been enforcement, had the fines, fines have been paid, but not necessarily through administrative law judge.
We just like the fines and.
Right. If they pay the fines, then they have to have recourse.
But the law requires, the the law requires the opportunity of a hear. So it's 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 hard for.
And we have to provide the hearing officer?
Yes, no, the county does, per the recycling law, but they don't.
The county does. Don't have anybody.
They don't have anybody, yeah, so.
Do we, does it have to be one person or it can be?
No, no, probably to be a panel, but.
I guess, that's what I'm wondering, if it can be a, a panel of a certain number who is ro- rotating. So if you have one person not responsible all the time, obviously, if there's a case, the one person's gonna see it through. I'm just wondering if if that is, and you know, it might be, are we allowed to try to recruit? And so I'm wondering if we wanna try to get the lawyer directly for Ulster County and send letters and maybe you'll find. If 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 they're not being committed to, you're available all the time, maybe we might get, you know.
One day, one occasional.
Yeah, I mean, the county really runs it, but we can, I can talk to the the clerk of the county legislature and see if they're.
Yeah.
Willing to entertain that and have multiple contracts, um, cause they have to administer the contracts, so.
Cause you, cause you know, I've I've spoken about compliance a lot and it's, I think if we, we have to get ourselves set up so we can make people comply and and have they have that recourse. So I think, I think this has to get done quickly and we can't just, you know, it's been almost a whole year. Can't wait another six, eight, nine years, we gotta do what we can.
If I could real quick, like, these people are not on call twenty four hours a day. This is not a, this is not bringing a defendant in for, right, first appearance. This is, it's around their schedule, so we just wanna get one person. And I think having a pool is a good idea, but we need to get one person under contract now and then move forward.
The county pays for it, we don't pay for it?
Correct.
Doesn't though in the law, it gives the actually the sheriff's department a municipal law enforcement?
To enforce it not to be an administrative hearing officer.
They can't. They can write a ticket though. They can write a ticket.
So can Robert. But but the sheriff's not interested in.
Oh, I know that, I'm just saying that to to get a judge. But writing the ticket does no good, because if somebody knows there's no hearing officer, they're gonna say, I wanna appeal it. Would the municipal judge in the town, you know, oh, okay. It can only be one of the.
It's an administrative officer.
Yeah, okay. It'll only be one of the, yeah, so. Well, so until we get one, nobody's gonna take a fine seriously. Yeah.
If we can't, three oh four can be amended, so it's just, it is.
Well, I mean, it's months, it's months to do that, it's a local law, it requires public hearings, it's, yeah. So we're working through it.
Any other questions? I have a couple. Uh, the permit modification, you said at any moment, what's there, are they, is the process, what do you mean?
So they had ninety days from August.
Is that up done?
No, uh, from August twentieth, but I, you know, they've told me that they will work quicker than that, so I'm expecting that it's fine.
How close are we to going over the top like last year? How close are we going to?
We're not.
We're not near close to.
Hang on.
But yeah, they don't.
Hang on here, we were at, so through July, we were at three, three, one, five, and we did another two hundred and fifty two ton in August. So what's to put us at thirty five, almost thirty five thousand?
Thirty five.
What are we at now, five thousand or?
Yes.
Five thousand.
So we're not gonna, we're not gonna.
Not this year, so we've lost some, you know, when we had to send everybody away, we got some of it back, but we lost like the Nolly. Um, they come somewhat, but they've also started taking their food waste to farmers, um, for feed. Um, so I mean, that's actually a higher use, but it's less beneficial to us. You know, them using that food waste to feed animals on the hierarchy is a higher use than us composting, but that doesn't help us.
And, uh.
But I did say to the, oh, if you have another question, and then I wanna add the update for, yeah, I I didn't talk about it.
Oh, yeah, okay, so one other question is, so, uh, you you interviewed four qualified, uh, in town candidates for the position of reuse, uh, reuse. But it looks like we have a little delay again, so does, is it fiscally responsible to hire the person now? We don't even have a facility and why not for several months?
Yeah, I mean, here's, it's like that chicken and the egg, we don't wanna not have the facility, but also we don't wanna have the person once we have the facility. So, um, there's work for that person to do, they won't just be sitting around.
So here's, are they aware, are they aware, like, is it's fair to make them aware that we don't have, right, so they know that we don't have a facility?
No, cause that's a brand new thing that happens.
Okay, but you will make the person, okay. I think that's fair.
Can I have more space in my office for sure?
For their personal.
Closet right there. Um, so that leaves me, I think I may have asked this when we discussed the position, so it's it's not covered under the collective bargaining agreement, right?
Correct.
So is it possible to have that person assisting Robert in compliance if they come on until we have another additional work?
Busy.
Yeah, I I mean, like I said, there is more than enough work building out this project that is not centered around the hub. That we could have them doing more than full time work between them.
Is this possible?
That's the priority, that that would be my, not that, not that that work's not important too, but until we get everything situated with, like, also Nancy can only file so many N O Bs, like, you know.
Yeah, it's 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 a sizable salary and I just don't wanna have them just being doing clerical work, so.
Well, if the whole thing, this isn't gonna happen, but if the whole thing falls through, then what do we do? With that person?
Yeah, I I mean, I would say.
I mean, you don't know, the board could.
Right.
Turn it down or something at some point, I mean, it's just, they should be aware, that's all. Especially if they're leaving another job.
Yeah.
Would you say that's fair? Um, and you have other, other.
Yeah, so there, I I have no update on this whip, uh, except for I know that they've received proposals. I believe in the email, they were much higher than what was budgeted for. They're working, I believe, with one of the vendors or something to try to, uh, I don't know, they they wanna salvage it so that they can get something, is my understanding. But, um, still not an immense amount of corp, uh, coordination. But it was an R F Q, not an R F P, so there's not a committee for them to invite me on and so that's, that's, you know, they will contact us when appropriate and we will help work with their vendor, whoever's selected. But, um, you know, they are looking at a zero waste policy. Because that's the county legislature's purview, not as much as zero waste implementation plan, is what I was told. So, um, they are looking at taking what is in the zero waste implementation plan and turning it into policy.
Maybe they can look at three oh four too, it's part of that.
Well, they have to look at three oh four, whatever we do is just recommendations to them, so, oh, you mean the consultant?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like they kind of go together, you know, I mean, I don't.
Depends on if it's, if it's a solid waste expert or if it's a zero waste expert, but they're not, that's true.
Okay, okay.
That's what I got.
Anything else? Any other questions? Uh, resolutions and board notification, resolution twenty six fifty one, approving the service grid at the terminal, so recovery agency and Ulster County all accept a motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second, okay.
So, go on, Katie.
Yes.
It's not red line version, right?
It is not, and what changed?
Yeah, I need a chance to do it.
Yeah, so.
Cause I think that what that was in the pack was different than what you, it changed a couple, couple times.
They changed it last night without really consulting. So in the definition on page five of bonds, um, it says, as amended from time to time, person for long. That's all they've added there, so they've, or sorry, that is not the right spot. Bonds, they added a line that says by a majority vote of the total membership of said body, talked about a resolution, um, and added sixty million.
Okay, but.
Sixty million cap, page four.
Each four, yeah.
Oh, that's one piece. Do you wanna just walk them through, not, I mean, just like what we talked about as far as the changes last night?
Um, yeah, the, so there was that change that you just mentioned, Mark, um, on page four with bonds. And then, um, I think the, um, the term two point oh five intent of bond, that was, I I reviewed the contract. It's everything that we had agreed on, the amendments that they have added.
I'm sorry, where, where's?
It was three oh one.
Two point oh five on page eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, except with the exception of two point oh five, um, intent to bond. I think we discussed that, um, they had this, they had a language in there that said, the county legislature then has thirty days or the next scheduled legislative session. If there's not a scheduled session in thirty days, receipt of the letter of intent to approve. Um, you know, we had originally proposed, um, language that said that, you know, it would be the board to oppose, um, but.
The legislature to oppose.
Sorry, well, let's.
As opposed to approve.
Exactly, um, and, uh, so, I mean, we ultimately agreed to this. Um, I think the issue here is that the thirty days is probably not enough time, um.
Well, what happens after thirty days is if they don't pass it, it's basically defeated.
Right.
Now, I talked to legislative council today, cause this is the, last night was the first time I saw this. Um, and I don't like it, but it's now moving to the full legislature and the only way to amend it would be to send it back to committee for another month. And I I, it's not as big of a deal that it's worthwhile to do that. All this says is, they have thirty days, it was written in a way that if they opposed it, they had thirty days to oppose it and then it would pass. Cause I wrote this language and it was either gonna be a bonding cap, which they decided to do, or this letter of intent, which then, if they didn't oppose it, it was authorized, if they did oppose it, it would come back to you and you could rewrite it by super majority. They changed that language, they added this in even though they had already done the cap of sixty million. So this really just sets up, if we wanna exceed the sixty million dollar cap, authorization cap. We have to submit a resolution to them, a letter with backup. They have thirty days to approve it or at their next scheduled meeting. And as long as they do that, we can move forward with bonds.
We, we have to follow their resolution deadline though, because their deadline to get on the next month's agenda is just a couple days after the previous legislative session.
We would wanna do that and I wouldn't, I would set it up, because the way this is written under definitions, it was the regular resolution process. Um, and I was comfortable with that, because we we're not gonna be in an urgent rush at the point when we're going to bonds. We're going to have that time. My biggest concern about this language is that if they don't pass it in thirty days, if Energy and Environment postpones it for some reason.
That's my.
Then we have to resubmit a resolution, which I'm told we can do, there's no issue with that.
So if they postpone it, it's up to us though to do the work to send it back again.
Yes.
So to me, that's kind of counterproductive, because they can just keep stalling it by postpone, 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 postpone. And then it's, is there any way you can just, if they postpone it, it just rolls back over again? Because if we have to take the time to resubmit a whole resolution package, which probably is gonna be the same one, but.
I I'm I'm not concerned about that work.
Kinda feels like though, we're just going through the motions.
Yeah, I mean, at some point, we have to have a good faith relationship that that's not gonna happen, that they would just, if they really wanted to oppose it, they would oppose it.
I I mean, I I I would be much more comfortable in saying that they must give us an up or down after thirty days, one way or the other. Because otherwise, I can see it just being drawn out forever. And in the meantime, but then we as an agency can't make any plans if we're waiting, if we're gonna get it, we're not gonna get it.
I mean, we can make the decision as an agency not to resubmit the resolution and treat it as a thirty day drop dead. But, I mean, if we wanna start this whole process over again and send it back to Energy and Environment, I am not a.
No, I know, I know, and and and, you know, um, I would wanna hear from counsel and and certainly we're not gonna do that in open session, so we can move on. But I just, I've got more questions than answers here, so apologies, but.
Is this over, this is over the sixty though?
Anything over the sixty.
Okay, so we can bound up to the sixty and what's the process for that?
Just a regular.
Just do it.
We just do it and there is no restrictions under sixty million. Um, we have a ten year capital project plan that's around forty million right now. So the only thing that's really would ever affect is bringing back.
What about the?
And it's a five year agreement, I just wanna stress that, it's it's a five year agreement.
Yeah, five year.
We can renegotiate this in five years, I don't think we're gonna bond forty million in five years.
Sixty.
I don't think we're gonna bond forty million in five years, but.
And and we're not gonna incur any of the costs for the alternatives to the landfill, right? That's gonna be all incurred by whatever we hire. It's the the R F P that we've put out.
Not for the landfill, for the diversion.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. We're not gonna incur any costs on those, uh, or in.
No, it's a feed stock agreement.
Okay.
It's, there's no capital, yeah.
Okay, I hope I didn't know what that means.
And so we, so it means we pay per ton for the amount that we give to them.
Okay.
So whatever comes through their doors, they charge us a per ton amount.
Okay, so we're not paying any cost for, cause I remember some of the proposals.
No capital costs. There's one with the building that's well within.
Okay.
And we already have a diversion building in our capital project plan and that's what I would use for that.
Okay, okay.
Are you supportive of this?
I am, but again, I am, if you all decide you want the full board to weigh in or you're not comfortable yet, then I don't think it matters whether we pass it. I I do not want it to wait in the legislature again, we meet much earlier than them. So I I, you know, they're gonna hopefully pass it on Tuesday. If we pass it at our next meeting, I think that's okay. I also think that it wouldn't hurt to get it passed tonight, but if there's still questions, I want everybody to be comfortable, so.
Roger, do you have anything?
Were there, I'm sorry, were there other changes? We we sort of stopped at this one.
No, that was, yeah, well.
Oh, yeah, well, uh, the indemnification.
Oh, that's right, um, we were, uh, we ultimately agreed that it is fine to remove the mutual indemnification clause. So at page.
Put the twenty online, put it online.
Yeah, page eighteen, uh, or after section five point oh eight, we had originally put in a mutual indemni- uh, indemnification clause. Um, but, um, I think, um, last Thursday, we met with, um, uh, chair, deputy chair and, um, council, minority council, and, um, it's, it doesn't seem like, um, it would be necessary because we are the ones that will be providing the service and the operations. So, um, we felt comfortable, um, removing the indemnification, the mutual indemnification clause, so.
It was really me swinging, cause I added that.
Right.
We did the new contract in March, um, is it necessary not to leave this bill?
And and I apologize, was was this, this wasn't in our package, was this email, Chris?
Was emailed to today, because I got it today.
Okay, okay.
Four o'clock.
There was changes, I I got it at three o'clock and I sent it to you.
Yeah, yeah, and 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 I apologize, I I I'm not gonna be ready to vote on this tonight, but I'm looking at it closer.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So I was, I was gonna vote, but if you.
You can, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Well, it would not pass, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna stay because it just, we got it at four o'clock and it's it's a five year contract. It's it's not really fair to ask, cause I don't understand it.
So procedure wise, uh, do I entertain a motion to postpone until the next one, is that?
Or you can take no action or you postpone, but you've already moved it.
Yeah, we moved it for discussion, we can still take no action.
You could.
So what was that then?
Whichever you want.
There's no action to.
Yeah.
Do I, do we have to vote on that?
No, no action is no action.
Okay, no action, okay.
We could amend the motion to postpone or we could just take no more.
Okay, we'll take that.
And I and I apologize, Mark, I don't.
No, I'm not gonna call a vote, but, no, look at it, that's fine, if they make no harm, no foul, and and, okay, that's fine.
We've waited for six months for them, so it can be a lot.
Exactly.
Uh, old unfinished business, the agency budget twenty twenty six.
I added this as an old business item because we had the public hearing, um, and I wanted to give the board an opportunity now that you have a month to hopefully look at and explore. and sort of say 26 budget, if there was any recommended, if, if there's anything you all are asking us to put forth in the new budget that will be passed in October and want to look at anything, then we can do that. There isn't anything. There will be some, there will be some minor changes like there is every year that will.
And I mean, you and I talked about that. I did bring up the hope that we could, who's a leader more for, you know, at least a part of our compliance officer. You know, having one person for the entire county to me doesn't feel like really. He's doing a good job. He's doing, actually, he's doing a great job. But to have even a halftime person to work with, it's feeling like unbelievable.
We'll take a look and see.
Retired, retired police officer or something like that.
Any fact that we can get elsewhere to.
Thank you.
That's important. Uh, I think, okay, new business. So what I added on here was a attendance policy for board members. And my concern is, I've heard it several times already, oh, we got to wait till the full board is here. We got to wait for the full board to be here. And we have a board member who has missed three meetings this year, including, and then also three committee meetings. So I would suggest that the governance committee come up with a policy for attendance for board members. So I'd like to make a motion that we ask the governance committee to review and investigate and recommend changes to our, um, bylaws related to an attendance policy for board members.
So I'll ask Nancy to do some research on that. You all are not the appointing authority and I don't know if you can set if it's unremovable, so.
Removals only by legislature.
Oh, that's not, I actually have a correspondence from the ABO. I'm happy to send it on to you. So if it's absolutely allowable, if we have it in our bylaws.
Oh, that's allowable, but yeah, but no, not removal, I don't think.
We're setting a policy on attendance or at least have some kind of criteria because we can't conduct business if we don't have board members here, right? So let's try to get the board members here.
It, it, well, it might be recommendation for removal because from the county planning board's standing, standpoint where I've been on for 16 years, which are appointed by the legislature as well, is county planning board, if we have an attendance policy, we can recommend to the legislature that they be removed.
We can't remove anybody.
But I, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, so I have a, quite an extensive letter from the ABO and then I'll certainly forward it.
You do want a motion? I'm happy to.
Well, is that make the motion to send it to the governance committee for evaluation? Is that?
That's, that's what I would suggest.
That's what I would suggest as well. Yeah, okay, go ahead and make the motion. Okay, you second that? And all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, do we want to have a deadline, uh, a deadline on that? We'd like to have an answer back by November 1st, something like that?
It has to be set by the chair of that committee.
Who is the chair?
John, Tim.
You sure? Are you sure? Oh, okay, so we'll request that by November 1st, if that's okay?
There's also, um, along the same lines is the, I don't know if it's with the ABO, but the issue of, and the paperwork, all the paperwork being in. When I was chair, like I said, I had a deal with that problem and it was a serious problem because my indications, I, you know, from what I heard from legitimate people was that you don't have all the paperwork and you're not a board member and you can't vote. It didn't come down to that, but.
There, there is, well, I know for oath of office, there's a 30-day period and if you haven't achieved it after 30 days, you're automatically removed and they would have to reappoint you.
I believe all the documentation from all.
Has everybody been in, oh, that's good.
Okay.
And, and also, um, uh, Tim, let me ask you, uh, the end of the year, you have to do a, you did. I don't know if you have to do it in the future because maybe it's changed personnel, but an evaluation to the ABO board, like, they wanted like three meetings of this particular thing and you had to explain to them why it didn't happen. You know what I'm talking about?
Are you talking about something specific or you talking about in general my reporting to the ABO?
What was?
Because you used the word evaluation. That's why I want to make sure.
I'm not sure, but it was that, um, you had, you would explain to me that that one of the committees didn't mean as many times as the ABO liked it.
So there, I would say there's a couple, a couple of answers to that. In general, we have a lot of compliance requirements to the ABO and a lot of the reporting on that or let's say responding or confirmation that we're doing what the ABO wants comes through the end of your annual reporting. Be it putting in numbers on one of their forms or whether it's answering a bunch of yes, no questions while they cite, you know, areas of opponent authority law. But that's all done, you know, at year end.
Yeah, right. Okay.
So I'm sorry, we were in the middle of the vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? No? Anybody abstain? No. So we'll send that to the governance committee for evaluation. Thank you. Uh, no one?
Unless a board member has a specific.
Anybody need executive session quest?
If it's about the contract, I mean, I would suggest waiting.
I'll wait because I'd rather read it and get all the questions.
And we got to wait for the rest of the board members to meet here anyway, so, you know.
Maybe we can.
Make sure we have all board members here.
Maybe we actually said it earlier.
Yeah, exactly, so we can ask questions, so we can actually vote at the meeting. That's right, or can I reach out to council directly with my questions? If I get them answered, then I'm fine.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So nothing else to add by anybody here in the comments? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
I heard the something.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? None. Anybody abstaining? None. Meeting end time is 7:13.
Please take pizza.